The Brown Act sets strict rules for teleconferencing. It requires that each teleconference location be identified in the notice and agenda, that it be accessible to the public, that members of the public be allowed to address the council from that location, that agenda be posted at that location, and at least one member be in the council chambers, and that at least a quorum of the council be participating for Montessorino. The governor's executive order has suspended those rules. The executive order does require that we continue to notice meetings in advance and that we provide members of the public an opportunity to offer public comment. Because we are not all in the same room, all votes at the meeting will be taken by a roll call. So unless Sergio wants to add anything, give me a second.
No, that was great.
Well, thank you. Oops. Give me one second to get the meeting started, and I'll let you know when that is.
And Andrea, I think my only comment at this point is our agenda says that people could submit comments by email. I assume you'll be checking for emails as well.
Yes, I have accessed email right here in front of me, and that's one thing I am firing up.
Are we ready to begin?
Okay, yes, I'm ready to begin.
All right, the City of Montessorino City Council meeting for April 20th, 2020 is now called to order. In lieu of the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to have a moment of silence in support of all of our essential workers fighting on the front lines of this crisis. Thank you. Andrea, roll call, please.
Councilmember Alahi. Councilmember Alahi.
Present.
Councilmember Labouvier.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Mayor Protem. Mayor Lawler.
Present.
Thank you.
Moving on, I'm assuming there are no changes to the orders of the day. Oral communications. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on items not on the agenda?
I may have. Okay, no, I don't see anybody wishing to speak.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, written communications, seeing no written communications, we will move on to the consent calendar. We have members wishing to pull items nine and 12 in consent calendar. Any others? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar minus items nine and 12?
And Mayor, I would recommend either approving five or eight. Those look like they are the same item.
Five and eight are the same item? Okay.
I'm sorry, I do have somebody that wants to make a comment. It just came through.
Okay.
Okay. How do I get her comment? So I, okay. I do have a comment from Susannah Craig. And I'll read that into the record. She said, "I wanted to say how disappointed I am that we are losing yet another valuable team member. The council needs to hire a HR coach to help them manage staff."
All right, thank you. Any others? Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Mr. Rudin, you said item five and item eight are duplicates?
At least as they appear on.
Because one's about the allocation of funds and the other one's about designating the city engineer as the city representative.
Okay. Let me just take a little.
They look like they're different things. Is that correct?
I think they should be, but online they might. At least when I open them, they appear to be the same item. I could be mistaken here.
Mr. Leonartis, can you?
Thank you, Mayor Lawler. Yes, there are two different items. One is the authorization of funds, execution of the memorandum of understanding for $10,000 to be contributed to the Safe Routes to School from the Measure B education funds received. The other item covers a seat at the board. Because of that contribution of funds, there were some modifications to the bylaws for the Safe Routes to School in order for the City of Montessorino to obtain a seat at the board. And our city engineer, Jessica Khan, will be holding that seat if this item passes through this evening.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to then approve the consent calendar minus items nine and 12?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
So I have a motion by Councilmember Labouvier. Do I have a second for the consent, to approve the consent calendar with the exception of items nine and 12?
I think Ruina seconded it if I heard that correctly.
Turner, you're seconding that?
Ruina seconded it.
All right, so I have that motion. So I will take a roll call vote. Councilmember Alahi.
Yes.
Councilmember Labouvier.
Yes.
Council, okay. Mayor Protem Luthold.
Yes.
And Mayor Lawler.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes 5-0.
Great. And then item nine, Councilmember Labouvier, you have comments?
Yes, I just wanted to say a few words about this. So item nine on the agenda is a second reading of an ordinance to implement the expansion of duties of the Site and Architectural Commission. This is a significant milestone for me, so I'd like to just recap the background, how this sort of came about, and thank the council that previously voted this through. So over a year ago, in January 2019, I had challenged the city management and city council on why Site and Architectural Commission review was not required for site development permits associated with subdivisions when the municipal code clearly stated that commission was enabled as a recommendation body. Councilmember Turner championed my concerns and introduced an ordinance that passed unanimously in June 2019 to require that the commission act as a recommending body for subdivisions. But unfortunately, this provision was only limited to subdivisions within the Hillside and Scenic Corridor. In May of 2019, I was fortunately seated as a council member, and it's my belief that we can better preserve Montessorino's unique character by including input from residents and the commission for all land use issues. So I had championed a non-binding resolution that passed unanimously in August of 2019 to implement this ordinance, to act as the recommending body for all subdivisions, planned development permits, and variances, and thus taking away the one outstanding limitations. So after seven months' delay, I really appreciate and thank the city manager and the new city attorney for implementing this ordinance and the council members that unanimously passed it in the previous meeting during my absence. I fully support the passage of this second reading. But we're not done. We have some more work to do to further enable resident input on land use issues. I'm delighted that the council unanimously passed the Good Neighbor and Site and Architecture Development Transparency Resolution in February 2020. And I'm looking forward to additional resident and consultant input to progress these ideas to full implementation as soon as possible. So that's really, thanks a lot, guys. Thanks for passing this. I think it was a, it's a good step towards involving the Site and Architecture Commission and really provide some additional and needed resident input on these very important land use issues.
Great, thank you. Do we have a motion then to go ahead and pass item nine? Or approve item nine?
I'll make a motion to pass it.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Labouvier.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Alahi. And I'll take a roll call vote. Councilmember Alahi.
Yes.
Councilmember Labouvier.
Yes.
Councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Luthold.
Yes.
And Mayor Lawler.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It passes 5-0.
Great, moving on. Item 12, Councilmember Alahi, you wanted to pull.
Yes, please. Thank you for pulling that, Mayor Lawler. This is an important item that has to do with approval of the Housing Element Progress Report. So as we look at the report, we have made progress on the low-income side basically because of the ADUs. I am concerned, however, that there's a big gap for the low moderate housing element. And I wanted to get some input maybe from Ms. Hamilton as to, or the staff, or the city manager, as to any thoughts on how we can meet those goals.
Ms. Hamilton, are you able to speak to this? Andrea, is Jeannie able to speak to this? Andrea?
Yes, give us one second. Oh, Jeannie, can? Ms. Hamilton? Okay, there she is.
Great, thanks.
Okay, so the way we kind of figure out the income level of these ADUs is by sending out surveys to those units that have been finalized and are ready for occupancy. At the time of the compilation of this report, and just for your information, we did have to send it off to the state despite all of this, but we do have the ability to continue to amend it as information comes in and as you all adopt your resolutions. So it had been submitted, and it's been recognized by the state that we are in compliance with the statutory filing requirement. But again, what we do is we survey the people who have these ADUs relative to the expected rental or use and/or, you know, income that they may derive from it. A lot of them come back and they identify what rent category. I've got a few that have come in since I did this report that I think alter the category. So we may find that we have a couple that fall into the low or low to moderate category. And I'll be looking at those as they come in and make, I don't want to piecemeal the changes. I want to, you know, give that another month for all the surveys to come back because I'd like to do a follow-up with the people so that we can get the final numbers. But a lot of these surveys come back saying that they're not going to charge any rent. Some charge minimal rent. So once all the surveys come back, I will look at the rent category that they've chosen and put it in, make any changes to the income categories for the ADUs as appropriate.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. I guess I'm concerned about the moderate. What is considered as moderate income category? And we have absolutely, we just have one unit that was built in 2016. And we have to get another 12 going. And when do, this has to be completed by 2022 or 2023? We have to meet our goals.
I think Rena numbers, and Sergio, you can correct me, but I think the new ones will be coming out the end of 2021. That, do you know?
So I have not heard. Actually, at the beginning of this year, it was anticipated they'd be coming out this April. It's unclear whether or not that's going to be happening in light of our current situation. Obviously, we don't have them now, and I have not heard anything from HCD at this point in terms of an updated timeline from them, nor have any of the other jurisdictions that I work with. So at this point, you know, it's hard to say how soon the new Rena allocations are coming. With regards to the annual progress report, you know, the city has to demonstrate that it's, you know, taking steps towards, you know, implementing the requirements that are in its current housing elements. So, you know, I think this report, which has already been submitted to HCD, because there's an April 1st statutory deadline, you know, outlines what the city has already done in terms of reaching its, and maintaining its allocations that are in the existing element.
Yeah, so the existing element, I guess, is all we're talking about right now. When does that need to be satisfied by? Is that a five-year term from the last time? Or what's the cut-off date on that? Because these numbers are supposed to satisfy the existing element requirements, and we're short on the moderate. So is there any thought on how we can meet the moderate targets under the existing guidelines? Because the new ones are going to be more drastic than this one. And I'm just trying to see if you even have a perspective on how these numbers can be met.
While there's, no good challenge. I have one, one of the surveys that came back indicated, you know, one of the ADUs will be rented at a amount that falls within the moderate. I mean, again, you know, how can we? That's a, that's a $64,000 question. Because, you know, we can't, we don't control the rent. Maybe with more of the ADUs coming on, there may be a greater opportunity or we may see more people utilizing the additional dwellings as an income opportunity. You know, I talk a lot to property owners who come in who are wanting to move out of the larger home and build a smaller one but stay within the area. So again, you know, they may be, you know, using these differently than what we've seen in the more recent past of just letting, you know, a family member or somebody live in it without paying rent. But again, you know, we, we pretty much have single land use in this city, so it's a challenge.
Yeah, no, I think we all appreciate that. I'm just trying to figure out if it's going to be more than. Let's hope something happens. I don't know if Mr. Leonartis has any thoughts on how we could meet these goals. Because they're going to be much more, we make numbers.
With the revised ADU regulations, you may be seeing larger ones being built that could offer, you know, two bedrooms, which again, those are the ones that we're seeing if they are, do fall within the moderate income category. Those are the ones that people are renting within that rent range. So with the changed ADU regulations, I think it's allowed larger units to be built.
Is this, the city encourage that that happens? Do we need to subsidize some of the two-bedroom ADUs? Or do we need to do something else to meet these goals? And the other question is, is it worth worrying about meeting these goals or should we just continue ignoring them?
So Mayor Lawler, this is City Manager Steve Leonartis. To answer Councilmember Alahi's question, the cycle that's coming up in 2021, and we have to have our reports completed by 2023, I was considering the use of outside consultants to help us process or, how can I say it, prepare to accommodate the numbers that we will inevitably be handed down in the not-too-distant future, the new Rena numbers, the next cycle. And, you know, you had voted through this evening already SB 2 funds. We can probably use those funds to hire a consultant to assist us with this process moving forward. That was kind of my strategic thinking. I have not given it too much thought as of late because there hasn't been much discussion about it lately, considering all that's been going on with COVID-19. There literally nobody has been paying so much attention to this. But once we're past this pandemic, of course, the discussions will resume and the process will resume. It's never too early to start thinking about it. So the overall strategy, you know, at least from the staff perspective, was to engage outside planning consultants to put something together using funds from the recently obtained SB 2 grant money.
Well, I guess we could discuss that as that comes up because, I mean, you could use them also to subsidize. And the other thought that I had is maybe we need to look at if there are going to be any developments. I guess there's already been one, and probably we missed the point on that. We're imposing some requirements that we also build moderate housing as part of the development. I hope we don't have any big developments, but that may be some thoughts. So yeah, I just wanted to, we don't forget about this issue. It's going to be really hard to deal with the new numbers.
All right, if I may, Councilmember Alahi, given that this has already been submitted to the state, do we have a motion to accept this progress report?
Yeah, I don't think there was an issue of the report, but I wanted it to have a discussion on this subject so that we don't ignore it. I will move to accept it.
Okay. I'll second it.
Okay, Councilmember Alahi?
Yes.
Councilmember Labouvier?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Luthold?
Yes.
Mayor Lawler?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, Andrea. Moving on to public hearings. We don't have any, so unfinished business. Item number 14, Report on Status of Local Emergency in Consideration of Terminating Local Emergency. Mr. Leonartis?
Thank you, Mayor Lawler. So just a brief report. On March 31st, the Public Health Department of Santa Clara County extended shelter in place through May 3rd due to the COVID-19 pandemic. In addition, greater restrictions were added to the shelter-in-place order, which included secession of all non-emergency construction work and all non-essential work activities, including those at City Hall. Also, increased health noticing was ordered, posted to workplace locations on all entrances and notices to employees, informing employees of the new guidelines. City Hall remains closed to the public, but inquiries by voicemail and email are being answered. Emergency services such as obtaining a permit for a leaking roof or broken furnaces are available. There are no reported cases of COVID-19 in Montessorino. However, these are difficult times for residents. The City of Montessorino has been sending out information through our Notify Me feature through our website. In addition, we have posted the county health department link for COVID-19 right on the first page of our main website. The information and resources are updated continually. I've been spending a good amount of time each week as the emergency officer for the City of Montessorino. I've been attending numerous conference calls and relaying informations to residents, employees, and the city council. I've been answering resident inquiries, disinfecting surfaces, attending teleconferences and webinars about safety net programs and potential economic obstacles coming to our economy as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. Because we are still in the middle of this crisis, my recommendation is to continue the emergency proclamation order in Montessorino, at least until the county lifts shelter in place. And I have some numbers that are the latest numbers from the county of Santa Clara. There have been 1,285 confirmed cases out of about 11,000 tested. It's about 11% rate of infected individuals. The death count in Santa Clara County is now up to 43. Hospitalizations are greater than 286. Intensive care of that 286 are greater than 91. And that concludes my report. I'm available for questions, if any, from council.
Thank you, Mr. Leonartis. I will start with Councilmember Alahi. Do you have any questions? Councilmember Labouvier, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thanks for the thorough report, Steve. Thank you.
Councilmember Turner, any questions?
No questions.
Mayor Protem Luthold, any questions?
No questions.
All right. Then are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
And I don't think there's anything the council is being asked to approve at this point. You know, the resolution that is on calendar is in case the council, per the council's prior direction at the last meeting, that they be given and provided, be provided an opportunity to terminate the local emergency. You know, we have provided that opportunity for the council by putting that on calendar, but we are not recommending at this point that the council act to terminate the declaration of local emergency.
Got it, thank you. Mayor Protem Luthold, you had a question?
No, I was just going to point out the same thing, which is really it's just to roll this over to each subsequent meeting so that we can terminate, when the time comes to have an agenda item available. But it doesn't look, we need of that at this point.
Right, right. Sorry. Sorry for the confusion. Thank you. Moving on, no business, no new business. Committee, commission reports. Have any council members participated remotely for any of their commissions or committees? Pardon me?
Everything is shut down.
I know. Well, some are actually holding remote meetings. I believe Silicon Valley did, or the Key Energy did. Okay, moving on.
California cities had, we had our meeting. But I have nothing to report from it. We will have the West Valley Sanitation District meeting tomorrow night.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to councilmember comments. For this portion, I will start from my left with Councilmember Labouvier, and then Councilmember Turner, Mayor Protem Luthold, and Councilmember Alahi.
No, no.
No, no comments from me. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Turner? Mayor Protem Luthold, any comments?
No comments.
Councilmember Alahi, any comments?
Yeah, I do have a comment, and I think Ms. Craig commended Andrea on her service. I would like to comment, commend her also for all the service she has done. And, you know, I've been concerned right from the beginning when I joined, the start of the year, so how we're losing a good, experienced staff. And we've pretty much had a complete turnover or change of all our experienced people. And, you know, some, some of these have decades of experience. We're all novices and have tried to manage it, but I think you've done a horrible job. And I think we, we need to fess up that we've done a horrible job in keeping our employees and our staff happy so that they continue working with us. They've left for one reason or the other, and what gets me is that it's always a total surprise if somebody's leaving because they found a better job elsewhere. I think we need to take some affirmative action, talk to the staff, talk to the employees, the mayor probably, I think there's a little burden on you to start making sure that these things don't just hit up in a surprise. The city manager is new, but you know, Mr. Leonardis also has a burden to make sure we maintain the staff we have, and if we don't lose these people, because it's going to be not easy to fill the gaps that we have. You know, we have replaced them, but the experience is always missing, and that hurts us. You know, there are things that are, that happen. As city council, we were not there before RENA, so we don't know what the past city councils have done. We've not been able to understand what goes on inside the city. And, you know, from one person who retired, to the city manager, to the city attorney, to the building commissioner, and then to our city clerk, we've lost really key people. I really hope this is taken seriously and efforts are made that this does not happen to really figure out what we are doing wrong, because I think we are all responsible. We are probably the laughingstock of this whole valley because of the way our city employees have turned over. And our city employees are easy pickin' for any other city who wants a good employee. All they have to do is come to Monteserino and pick them out. A lot of time, employers get concerned when somebody applies and they say, why do you want to leave? If they're coming from Monteserino, they don't even have to ask that question. So I would really implore all of us to do a better job at taking care of our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, member. Thank you, Councilmember Alahi. Moving on to city manager's report, Mr. Leonardis, do you have anything else to report at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Lawler. I just wanted to announce three things this evening. The print edition of our spring newsletter is arriving in residents' mailboxes this week. It is titled "The Peaceful Mountain Monitor." It should be coming in the next couple days, something to look forward to. Item number two, the West Valley cities are in discussions to join forces to support West Valley Community Services. A particular need is housing assistance funding. I wanted to pull council support for a possible consent agenda item at our next meeting to consider awarding West Valley Community Services funds outside of our normal grants process. And this is again, in reaction to the COVID-19 crisis and increased need for at-risk housing assistance. So I wanted to put that out there. I will be meeting with them remotely later this week, and I believe two of the four, two of the five so far member cities in the West Valley have agreed to contribute funds. And we will see what the other member cities come up with, but I will report back to you, and we can perhaps consider putting this a recommendation going forward to fund the housing assistance needs of West Valley Community Services. Item number three, originally on our agenda this evening was our annual goal-setting session. That item has been removed as it is considered a non-essential city business item under the county health order. When to put it on the agenda in the future is the question of the evening. And I think, you know, considering it's, it's an important subject, it would be difficult to carry it on in the manner that we are operating under this evening. Not that we're not doing our best, and by the way, I'm very grateful to our IT and Andrea for putting together the solution so we can have this meeting this evening. Thank you. Our, our T-person, Dave Kison, thank you for your efforts. But I think we should look at having the goal-setting session the old-fashioned way, a live meeting with residents so they can come in and participate in person. And I'm hoping that Tuesday, May 12, will be the occasion. It's not a regularly scheduled council meeting night. It is after the current shelter-in-place order will be lifted, although it's possible that it could be extended and we will have to relook at another date. But I just wanted that to mention, I just wanted to mention this date to council this evening as a possibility, as the next potentially best opportunity for us to hold our goal-setting session. And that is the end of my report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Leonardis. Councilmember Turner, do you have a comment? Okay. Never mind. My, it was, there was a delay. All right. Well, thank you. I, you know, I certainly support the idea of supporting West Valley Community Services, and perhaps we can see that on the next agenda if, if other council members are open to that idea.
And... I think, I think it's a good idea also. You know, we should, we should help out and join, join the rest of our sister cities in, in that effort.
Great, great. And as far as May 12 goes, I, I'm okay with that. I suppose that's sort of the work in progress?
Yes.
Okay.
We will be ready for, for May 12, provided that, you know, the world is ready.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Leonardis. Moving on, are there any council members wishing to see an item on a future agenda at this time, or? Seeing none. Before we adjourn tonight, I have one more important item to speak about. Our 26-year city clerk, almost 27 years, Andrea Chalamangos, has accepted a role in the beautiful city of Los Altos. We are, of course, going to miss Andrea and all the great things Andrea brought to the city of Monteserino. Great things Andrea has done, such as her planning and conducting our annual city picnic, working with our youth commissioners, and the friendly service Andrea always provides residents. And all the job duties Andrea has performed over the years here in Monteserino, from postal clerk to city clerk and others, including removing roadkill. Apparently, there's a story behind that one. Andrea, it has been a blessing knowing and working with you. I will miss you dearly. We wish you continued success in your new role, and when we get past shelter in place, we would like to have a celebration for you and formally recognize your service. We will be looking forward to that. So in honor of Ms. Chalamangos and her last official meeting as city clerk of Monteserino, I will adjourn tonight's meeting in the name of Andrea Chalamangos.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure serving the city of Monteserino. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
Yeah, I, before you adjourn, could we also get a chance to say a couple of words for Andreas?
Of course.
Yeah, Andrea, thank you for being there. I mean, as somebody who didn't know anything about city politics, you helped us through the application process, and you're, you're always there to remind us as to what form needs to be filled, and then you perform beyond and above your duty as city clerk. City picnic, where you and your husband, and I hope he's doing well, have also pitched in to set that whole thing up. And then, you know, your manuals that you have prepared for new council people where, which explains all the city rules and ordinances and all in one person's space, and the time you take to do orientations with us to explain the role that the city council has to play. I thank you for it, and I really wish you well. Los Altos is going to be good for you. It's a good city. And I wish your husband a speedy recovery and take care of yourself. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Councilmember Alahi.
Any other council members?
Yeah, can I chime in?
Sure, of course.
So, hey, Andrea, I really enjoyed, you're the constant, and for me, you were the benchmark of customer orientation, customer service. I think that was sort of the constant in Monteserino that is going to be sorely missed. You know, meetings generally, or regularly went, you know, without a hitch, which everyone seems is, is, you know, that that is common, but it's not. I mean, it takes a lot of effort. It's obvious how much effort you put into these meetings, into the agendas, into getting the, the public comments documented, you know, performing all of the duties of the clerk. But in addition to that, I really very much appreciated the warmness that you brought to the youth council, and, you know, the kids really appreciated, I think, your contributions and the way you interacted with them. I used to love your emails, the way you were creative and put a lot of characters in there and tried to get their attention and prodded them to move in the right direction. I think that that was also just a wonderful asset for the youth of Monteserino, and I think you're just going to be really sorely missed, and I hope you'll come back and visit all of the time. And whenever there are ice cream socials, please know that you are more than welcome and that your legacy will be long, long-felt and long-missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Labueve. I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
You're here.
Okay. And if I can jump in?
Of course.
Yeah. Andrea, I wanted to express my heartfelt thanks as well. I know I sent you an email as well. Really appreciate everything you've done. Very sorry to see you leaving. And I want to echo everything that has been said already. Really an asset to the city, and I'm very glad for you moving on, but appreciate all you've done for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Luthold. It's been a pleasure.
Councilmember Turner? Councilmember Turner? She texted me she wanted to speak, so I don't know what's happened here.
Perhaps she's...
She's muted, that's why.
Let's see. She's muted locally.
Let's see, I'll text her.
Okay.
Say...
There she is.
Go ahead, Councilmember Turner.
Okay. Andrea, I just wanted to say that I'm going to miss you sorely. We have been working together for, for almost three and a half years now, and I have enjoyed working with you at every picnic. And I am, I want you to know that I am praying for your husband and that he will be taken care of. Thank you for all your service.
Thank you, Councilmember Turner. It's, like I said, it's been a pleasure working for the city of Monteserino. I am going to miss all those involved.
All right. Well, on that note then, I want to say thank you to everybody, and stay safe, and we will meet again in two weeks.
All right. Bye.
Bye.
Moving adjourned.